Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on September 7th, 2023. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2023 through January 2024. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 17th, 2023. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 13th, 2023 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, PrincetonNJ.gov/calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We'll have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that, uh, excuse me, please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. An appropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli, I'm here. Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Tech Charney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Jackie muted?
Here.
Mr. Bodigheimer? Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, announcements. We have a very active fall before us. Um, Justin, you want to get us started?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's nice to see you all again, uh, after the brief break. Um, as the Chair said, very active time of year, especially when it comes to the master plan. Uh, we are in the eighth inning or, or fourth quarter, driving down the field, whatever you want to call it. Um, before ultimately hoping to have the meeting adopted, or the master plan adopted in November before the Planning Board. Uh, and we've set aside a, a meeting in October to introduce the master plan. A meeting in November, I believe it's November, oh man, I should have this written down somewhere. Um, November 19th, I believe, uh, before, or no, no, November 16th, I want to say. Um, but I'll get you those, those exact dates, um, with the potential that we have a third meeting, November 30th. Uh, if need be, uh, to discuss plan adoption, um, and have the hearing and make sure we get everything in that we need to. Prior to that, though, um, this upcoming week, uh, the steering committee, uh, subcommittees on each element will be meeting with staff and with our consultants to continue to, to discuss drafts of all the elements that will eventually make up the plan. Um, following that, uh, or actually kind of concurrently, uh, staff will be going around, uh, to different areas of town for listening sessions. And I could come back to them, uh, in more detail, but I, I kind of want to go sequentially. Uh, we're going to have a steering committee meeting on November, or on September 20th at 2:00 PM on Zoom. Uh, everyone's welcome to attend that, and that's the seventh meeting of the full steering committee, uh, and most likely the second to last meeting of that steering committee. Uh, and then that will culminate in the, uh, our second and final open house, uh, for the master plan on, uh, September 27th here at 400 Witherspoon Street, uh, in the main room. Uh, and that'll be another one similar to the one we had at the library almost a year ago. Uh, where there will be boards throughout the room, uh, there's, there will be steering committee members, consultants, uh, and to really discuss where we're at with the plan, uh, get some input and, uh, you know, lead to that final document. Um, so coming back to those listening sessions, these were kind of, uh, you know, after consulting, uh, with, uh, the members of the steering committee, uh, members, planning board leadership. Um, we thought, uh, it was a good idea to have additional, um, meetings throughout town. And really, uh, these are to, you know, supplement all the other things that we've been doing and go to people on their home turf, maybe people who weren't able to come out to any of the other things that we had, um, at the library or at 400 Witherspoon, um, or, or fill out anything online, uh, and try to, you know, continue just to get input, um, from groups that might not have been represented. These are open to all, uh, but they're spread out throughout the town. Uh, the first one being a virtual meeting next Tuesday, um, followed by one on the eastern side of town. Uh, this is Riverside Jug Town, but you know, as I said, all are welcome to attend. Um, I've already got an email from someone saying, hey, you know, you didn't choose my neighborhood. We don't get a say, and that couldn't be further from the truth. Um, you know, so we hope that, that people could come to whatever's convenient for them, date, time. Uh, several of these are, you know, in the morning, in the afternoon, Saturdays, uh, nights, virtual. Um, and some more might be added, uh, you know, as we just continue to talk to people and find facilities that we could go to and dates and times at work. Uh, so next week, like I said, we'll have a virtual one. Um, uh, I'll also be going to Princeton University Campus, the Farmers Market and others, uh, and the First Campus Center to kind of table, um, there with, for faculty and staff, rather than have a full listening session. Um, a Spanish speaking one next Thursday at the Witherspoon Presbyterian Church. Uh, Witherspoon Jackson Area One at the Arts Council next Saturday. Um, and just several others in, in the weeks after, uh, leading up to the master plan open house. So these will be pretty open-ended, uh, feel free to drop in whenever you can. We'll just have questions, uh, related to what's going to be in the plan and the, the bigger, uh, kind of element themes and, uh, you know, how people get around town, uh, housing, land use, those kinds of things. So. And I'm happy to take any, if anyone has them.
So just so, but looking at my calendar, what I have, um, and I know this is risky to even do this, but is that, uh, we're aiming to introduce, uh, the master plan, um, or have our first planning board meeting devoted to the master plan on October 19th. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, um, we've set aside November 2nd. Oh, sorry, that's landline. I'm sorry. So set aside, uh, November 9th.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is, uh, yeah, set aside November 9th, which is a regular meeting. And there's a possibility for a special meeting on the 16th. Um, which is unusual because that's the week of the League of Municipalities, but it's the night after the last day of that conference down in Atlantic City. So, um, if we need to go to a third night, um, we can carry over to November 16th and that, and is that meet with your, is that?
No, no, we, we switched that one to the 30th of November.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Noticing requirement. So.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Sorry. I, I apologize. Well, good to, um, clarify. Taking it off my calendar as we speak. Okay, so the 30th, um, if, again, if necessary, that's a week, uh, after Thanksgiving and, um, not a regularly scheduled meeting. Okay. Um, anything else, uh, Justin?
No, but it looked like, uh, Mr. Quinn and Mr. Mueller, uh, had comments.
Okay, great. Tim?
Thank you. My, my question is for, is for Mr. Mueller. Uh, could you, uh, discuss the quorum implications for Planning Board members attending these listening sessions? Uh, my understanding is there aren't any implications?
Exactly. There aren't any. This is a quasi-legislative function and it's much more fluid and open than an application would be where we know we have very strict requirements.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Um, so there's no excuse for members not to go to these listening sessions in your neighborhood.
Or, you know, or one or more, whichever ones, you know, are convenient or might, or might interest you. Yeah. Good. Um, Zenon, Tech Darney?
So, um, could you describe a little bit more about like what, what will happen during these listening sessions? Are they just kind of open-ended where residents will be able to kind of share their thoughts? Or is there going to be kind of something to respond to?
Hmm, uh, a combination of both. Um, my staff and I are working now to get together some sort of presentation, but, you know, we don't want to be talking the whole time during a listening session, uh, so we'll probably just have direct questions, um, for people to respond to. And, you know, we'll be taking notes on it and, uh, making sure that gets back to the master plan consultant that's actually writing the report, uh, as well as the steering committee.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Justin? And if not, are there any other announcements? From staff or board members? Okay, seeing none. Thanks, Justin. Um, subcommittee reports. Do we have any? Any of the, I would not think so. I don't think that we, okay, no subcommittee reports. So administrative business, we have, um, uh, tonight we're appointing, um, special counsel for redevelopment. Board members may remember in, um, actually last year and the year before, I guess, we had, um, uh, Special Counsel Frank Regan, who attended meetings where we were, um, hearing redevelopment applications because his, um, legal specialty was, um, is redevelopment. Um, he also, uh, was, was counsel's redevelopment attorney. Um, counsel has, uh, retained a different redevelopment attorney because Mr. Regan stepped back, um, for sabbatical or something like that. I'm not clear on the details, but, um, both counsel and, uh, board leadership felt it was appropriate for, um, our board to engage separate, um, special counsel, uh, meaning not the same individual representing counsel on redevelopment issues. So we have, um, had an interview with and felt very, very comfortable recommending the appointment of Marazidi Falcon LLP, specifically Joe Marazidi, um, who is really one of the preeminent redevelopment attorneys in the state, um, with a long, long history of accomplishments and, um, so I'm delighted, uh, that's a little, sorry to go on and on about this, but I really am delighted to, to have this on the agenda tonight. Um, Joe will be available for the balance of the year if needed and, um, and then we will, uh, take action at the, at the reorganization meeting, which is the typically the time to do this kind of thing, to, um, appoint him as special redevelopment council for 2024 as well. Because I know we'll have some issues, um, um, some redevelopment applications or expect we will, um, in the new year. Uh, is there a re, a resolution? Does, do we need to take action on, on this? Or it does say administrative business, so I'm guessing not.
No, I think you, you need to vote on this.
Okay, would someone like to? Carrie, Ms. Philip?
I was just going to say that we, I did prepare a resolution and that was part of the material that we attached.
Okay, my bad.
Um, no, it's okay. All I need is a, a vote to appoint and it's, it's done.
Mr. Cohen?
I move, uh, we approve the resolution.
A second.
Thanks, Mr. Quinn. Um, uh, let's have a roll call vote then.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tech Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Great, thank you. Resolutions, we have three. First, uh, for the trustees of Princeton University.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Excuse me, yeah, sure.
You skipped a minute?
Oh, I did. You're right. Sorry about that. We have two sets of minutes from two regular meetings, first being March 2nd, 2023. Um, are there any questions or edits we need to discuss? If not, would someone like to move those minutes?
I'll move approval.
Thanks, Mr. Quinn. Sir, and seconded.
A second.
I, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, um, the next set of minutes, um, is from April 13th, 2023, another regular meeting. Are there any comments, questions, or edits to discuss? And if not, would someone like to move those minutes?
So moved.
Um, moved by Mr. McGowan, seconded by Mr. Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, and thanks, Mr. Muller. Um, resolutions, trustees of Princeton University, this is a minor site plan with variances. Um, the residential college additional signage at Elm and South Drives. This was file P 2323-345 PM. Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Would you like me to advise?
Oh. Oh, as to who is eligible, Carrie?
Correct, correct. Uh, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tech Charney, Mr. Taylor, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Quinn, uh.
My motion to approve stands.
A second.
Thank you, Owen. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Um, next is, uh, trustees to Princeton University, minor site plan with conditional use at 252 Nassau Street. File number P 2323-349 CO slash P.
The same individuals are eligible to vote on this.
Great.
I'll move.
Thank you. O'Donnell, seconded by, was that you, Mr. Quinn?
It was.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. And thirdly, also trustees of Princeton University, preliminary and final major site plan for Eric and Wendy Schmidt Hall at Washington Road and Geo Lane, Block 45.01, Lot 101. File number P 2222-235 P slash C O. Uh, Carrie, would you say? Go ahead.
Yes, yes, those members eligible are Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tech Charney, Mr. Taylor, and Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you.
Louise, th- this was actually approved, not the resolution, but the application quite some time ago. And you can see it's been delayed a bit. Um, and if you want, we could, Justin could explain very, very quickly what that was all about. Um, the, the, would you like to, him to do so?
Sure, sure. So, Justin, are you, yeah, there you go.
Sure, Jerry, can you remind me, this is, uh, the conditional use one? Or the Schmidt Hall one?
This is Schmidt Hall.
This is Schmidt Hall, Justin.
It was a mitigation plan. That, that Joe Scoopin was reviewing.
Stormwater mitigation.
Mm-hmm.
And he, and he just got back to us recently with that and said, everything's fine, and then we put it on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
That's the explanation.
I, I can validate that.
Thank you, Justin.
Everything did go through the office. We were advised immediately from Dan Weisman that we needed to, uh, confirm all the information in the stormwater mitigation plan before we can proceed with the findings. And so we waited until Mr. Scoopin confirmed the information received, and then we proceed.
Good. Great. Thanks for putting all that on the record. Um, Mr. Cohen?
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGowan. Um, thank you both. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Okay. Um, next up, we have a hearing and application. This is bogey construction. I think I'm pronouncing it correctly, but if I'm not, I'm sure I'll be corrected. This is a minor subdivision with variances at 60 Lafayette Court, Block 8601, Lot 8, and its file number P 2323-315 MS. Um, Mr. Mueller, can you speak to notice and jurisdiction?
Yes, um, the notice was proper, um, and service was proper, and the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Jerry, would you like to swear me in?
Yeah, uh, I'll swear you in. Are any other staff members going to testify, likely to testify?
Yes, if you would swear in, Mr. Weisman, Mr. Bridger, um, that would be good.
Right. Okay, um, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give, uh, will be the truth?
Yes.
Yeah.
So swear or affirm.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Uh, so I am going to share my screen on this one. Uh, the application before you is for a subdivision of one lot into two. Um, to get you situated, uh, with the location, uh, I'm using NJ GeoWeb from the State Department of Environmental Protection, uh, Bureau of GIS. Uh, Jerry, I don't know if we need to make this, uh, uh, an exhibit.
Yeah, let's make that P, uh, exhibit PB1.
Okay, um, so the subject property is where my cursor is. I, I just clicked on it. Um, it's to the north of Rosedale Road, uh, Elm Road is running over here, uh, to the east of this property. And this, uh, subject property is off of the private Lafayette Court West, um, which runs roughly through here. Um, moving to our zoning map, Jerry, does this need to be another exhibit?
I think we should make that, yeah, PB2.
Okay, this is the municipal zoning map, um, and I'll zoom in. Uh, the subject parcel is where my cursor is, uh, and you'll see that it's in green for, uh, the R2 Township Zone. Uh, and Lafayette Court West is roughly divided in half. Um, some was in the former borough and is zoned, um, R1 of the former borough. Uh, the other half is like the subject property, R2 of the former township. Uh, the lot is currently, and I'll move back to the NJ GeoWeb, uh, currently 1.85 acres in area. Uh, the applicant's requesting to subdivide it into two parcels. Uh, the one to the north would be about 0.95 acres in area, and the one to the south would be just slightly less at 0.9, uh, acres in area. In the, uh, township R2 zone, 1.5 acres is the minimum lot size. Uh, but as I noted in my report, some of the, uh, parcels in the neighborhood are as small as seven tenths of an acre. Uh, and that ranges up to about one and a quarter acre, uh, along Lafayette Court West. So a 300 and, uh, 3,600 square foot, single-family dwelling with an attached garage, uh, and a 1,500 square foot, uh, cottage accessory dwelling currently exists on the parcel. The accessory dwelling predates the 2020 ADU ordinance, uh, and is legally non-conforming. Um, there are also a pool and a driveway, uh, along with, uh, the existing house. Um, if the, uh, subdivision was approved, the applicant says they would keep the house and the accessory dwelling on the northern lot, um, and build a single-family home of no more than 4,875 square feet or less on the new southern lot. Uh, they provided a proposal of what that house might look like. Uh, and unfortunately, I, I don't believe we included that in your packet, uh, and it didn't go up until recently. Um, so I apologize for that, but I imagine the applicant will show it. Um, as you saw in my report, though, uh, the zoning officer determined that what was proposed, uh, or provided would require a variance for the neighborhood character standards, uh, for the distance from the, uh, front of the garage on the side of the house to the facade of the house. Um, I understand that the applicant noticed for the variance, uh, but that they're withdrawing that request at this time. Uh, if they could state that for the record, uh, that would be appreciated, uh, when they, uh, do present. Um, the variants, variances that they then are asking for are, uh, C2 variances, um, for lot size on both lots, as was mentioned before, as well as lot frontage and lot depth. Um, really, my only comment is, uh, you know, outside of preserving trees that are similar, uh, in the neighborhood when the time comes for them, uh, to build a house, uh, is that the applicant should provide testimony addressing, uh, the variances, um, which I imagine they'll do in their presentation. Um, before they present, though, I want to turn it over to Mr. Bridger, Mr. Weisman, to discuss their report, including some comments that they had in it about a riparian zone on the site.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna like.
Jerry, you're going first? Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna hand off to Dan unless you have questions about the, uh, the variances. They're laid out pretty straightforwardly in the report. Um, and I think Dan can speak to the, uh, riparian zone, but I'm glad to answer any questions if you have any, so.
Okay. Mr. Weisman?
Uh, David, uh, Mr. Cohen has his hand up.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry, David. Go ahead.
Okay, I should have erased my virtual hand.
Um, yeah.
Probably wouldn't have seen that either.
Uh, it's fine if Dan goes first, but I would also like to ask Derek to just summarize a little bit. The, um, requirements in the Borough R1 Zone, which applies, you know, to a little over half of this street. Um, cause I, I'd just like to know, like minimal lot size, FAR, stuff like that. Um, so we can factor that into our consideration of their, of the variance.
Good, I'm gonna hand off to Dan and then I'll get my cheat sheet and be right back. So, thanks.
Thank you, everybody, and good evening. Um, the one comment we just wanted to, uh, talk about briefly was the plans provided with the application, uh, indicated that a stream with a 50-foot riparian buffer, uh, exists on the property. Uh, because the stream is an upstream tributary of Stony Brook, uh, which is a category one water. Technically, this stream is also categorized as a category one water. What that means is that it turns from a 50-foot riparian buffer to a 300-foot riparian buffer, essentially encapsulating the entirety of the existing lot. Riparian buffers are environmentally controlled areas. It doesn't mean that no development would be permitted. There is a, uh, permit by rule that the NJ DEP allows construction on sites in a riparian buffer. Uh, but it can clear no more than, uh, one quarter of an acre on the lot. So, um, the lot becomes environmentally constricted with this, uh, change in buffer, but it doesn't make it unbuildable. One comment that was also in the report was that the applicant may, uh, submit to the DEP for an applicability determination. Um, the DEP may be able to override the 300-foot riparian buffer, um, but that would be up to the DEP and the applicant if they choose to do so.
Okay, that's, that's helpful, and that actually reminds me of a question that may be appropriate for further on after we've heard from the applicant, but it has to do with the comment in your memo, um, on pages three and four about surface water drainage and the, um, distinction between small project versus large project, uh, and which stormwater, which, which would apply and how that would affect the stormwater management plan standards, um, et cetera, et cetera. So at some point, I, I want to make sure we address those, um, those, um, because if what we see tonight is based on a small project, um, assumption and it actually is a large project, um, then we're gonna need to talk about how the stormwater management plan would be approved, because typically we see those before this board. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I also just wanted to ask a quick follow-up to Dan. When I originally saw your comment and misunderstood it as being related to the floodplain delineation. I understand that that's not what you were referring to, but this is fairly close to Stony Brook. And I'm just curious whether we have a good sense that this is outside of the floodplain. You know, we just adopted a new ordinance where we're looking at the five hundred year instead of the one hundred year for definition of our floodplain. And so I'm I'm curious if, um, if you've looked at that aspect of the map.
Yeah, uh, absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. Um, we definitely, uh, looked at that. The property is not located within any mapped floodplains, uh, floodways. FEMA did a, a, a mapping of the entire municipality in twenty sixteen. Um, the property is not located in any of those floodplains.
Thank you.
Um, and then I can answer the, absolutely, I can answer the question about stormwater management, or we can wait. Madam Chair, I'd leave that up to you.
Uh, why don't you? Why don't you address it now and, um, and if it needs to be explained better than I did for the benefit of the board, in case what I said was confusing, please feel free to clarify or correct. Um, and I'm sure that we'll talk about it with the applicant as well.
Sure. Uh, so the floodplain, I'm sorry. Princeton Stormwater Control Ordinance uh, classifies residential projects as small projects or large projects. Small projects increase impervious surface by four hundred square feet. Large projects are categorized by projects that either increase impervious surface by five thousand square feet or disturb one half acre of land or greater. The increase in impervious surface is a net increase, so you can add or take away to change the threshold of of where you would fall. Um, some people take away patios so they can construct decks and it's internet. Um, in this case, uh, it looked like there were some impervious surfaces removed from the existing property. Um, that credit was taken for uh, on what would be the construction on the new lot. That wouldn't be allowed, uh, once the lots are subdivided, they're subdivided. Um, and so that credit cannot take place. So if construction on the new lot uh, increases impervious by, uh, more than five thousand square feet, it would be considered a large project with such has to meet the same requirements of a major development. And that's your stormwater, uh, quantity control, quality control, groundwater recharge. Review of small and large projects is done administratively. Um, it wouldn't go before a board for review, so it would be done, um, by myself and the stormwater management consultant if needed.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bridger?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Madam Chair. So the the R one zone in the former borough has a minimum lot area require or maximum or minimum lot area requirement of twenty thousand square feet versus the R two in the former township, which has a sixty-five thousand three hundred and forty square foot or one and a half acre, um, lot area requirement. The lot width in the borough R one is one hundred and twenty-five feet. The lot depth is one hundred and twenty-five feet. Uh, front yard setback is thirty-five feet. The combined side yard setbacks are thirty feet with a smaller being no smaller than ten. And the rear yard setback is thirty-five feet and, um, there's a height to setback of one point five to one. The lot width, lot depth and lot frontage in the R two zone in the, uh, former township are all one hundred and seventy-five feet. The front yard setback is twenty-five versus the boroughs of thirty-five. The side yard setbacks and the rear yard setbacks are are twenty feet. Whereas the borough has a combined thirty-foot side yard setback with a smaller of ten and a rear yard setback, as I mentioned earlier, thirty-five feet. And there's a height to setback of one to one point five. So that's, uh, if you have any questions, I'm glad to try to address them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, any other, any other comments, uh, from our own professionals? And if there are none, um, Mr. Schatzman? Welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Richard Schatzman, attorney for the applicant. Uh, Mr. Lesko's memorandum of August thirty-first and his testimony is accurate. Uh, we have today three witnesses, Mr. Brooknerian, who is the engineer, who I will not ask to repeat what Mr. Lesko said because it'd be merely repetitive, but the comment uh, on his testimony. And we have Mr. Travis, the architect, and Mr. McDonough, the planner. So since Mr. Lesko testified, uh, Mr. uh, Narian sworn in. And I'll ask him a few questions to give general comments relative to the engineering issues that were raised by Mr. Lesko. So would you please have him sworn in, Mr. Mueller, please?
Yeah. The other two witnesses you mentioned, your intent is to have them testify as well, Rich?
What's that?
Your other two witnesses that you mentioned, your intent is to have them testify as well?
Yes.
Okay, why don't I swear all three of them in?
Okay, Mr. McDonough. And Mr. Travis.
I'm here. Morning.
Yeah. Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes. Okay, so sworn or?
I do.
If you could.
Mr. Travis, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, there you are. Okay, so your hand was raised and you said, I do?
I do.
Okay.
Okay.
If you could just.
Yes, or whatever.
If you could just go around, starting with Eric, and state your full name for the record and spell your last name.
Certainly.
Eric seems to be frozen. Maybe we can go in a different order.
Yep.
R A I N.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. McDonough? Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is John McDonough. It's spelled M C capital D O N O U G H. I'm the project planner.
Francis Travis. It's T R E V S. And, um, I'm the project architect.
You think it?
First, before we, uh, uh, I will state for Mr. Lesko's question that that variance uh, will be, uh, withdrawn. We will comply with the neighborhood distance for the garage, uh, setback for the garage. Uh, this board couldn't grant it anyway because it can't have site plan approval. Because it's site plan approval for single family dwellings are exempt under the municipal land use law forty colon fifty-five D hyphen thirty-seven. But should you grant approval for this, you can put in the resolution that the it was granted on the basis that the, uh, garage will be set back in accordance with the neighborhood uh, zoning ordinance recently adopted, fairly recently adopted. Uh, you have a right to require that, in my view, and Mr. Mueller can agree or disagree on their case called, uh, Dalmyer versus Lacy, because the house has to fit in with one of the proofs that we have to prove is the house has to fit in with within the neighborhood. And I would say that it's a C two variance. It's not a C one because we could never prove a C one case in this. Uh, it's a C one case, and so, which is a hardship. This is the expandable C two where you have to find, as a matter of fact, that the benefits of granting the variance outweigh any detriments. And that the granting of the variance is also a good zoning, uh, uh, for the town as well as the applicant. It's not only the applicant, but it has to be for the town. You have to find that. And, um, uh, that's what you have to find and it's up to you based upon the testimony, your knowledge of the neighborhood uh, to to make that determination. Uh, now you've heard, uh, Mr., first of all, Mr. Rubnerian, please give us briefly your, uh, your professional qualifications.
Certainly, I am a licensed professional engineer in Pennsylvania. I've been licensed since two thousand and three.
Uh, we're, we're not hearing much of what Mr. Ruth Narion is saying, um. And, uh, and that's an issue, so maybe Mr. Ruth Narion, if you can disable your camera, it might help stabilize your connection. Okay. You can start over again?
Certainly. I am a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I received my P license in New Jersey in two thousand and three. And from Pennsylvania, I believe in twenty thirteen. In nineteen ninety, I graduated from Villanova University with a bachelor's in civil engineering. And in two thousand and one, I received a master's in civil engineering from the same. Uh, since nineteen ninety-seven, I've almost exclusively practiced in civil engineering and developing both residential and commercial subdivisions and both residential and commercial site plans. Um, I've prepared in within the, um, states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania.
And, uh, you you prepare the engineering plans for this project, am I correct?
Just before we get to.
Yes, I can.
Which, before we get to that, of the qualifications accepted, uh, Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. God, Rich.
Um, and you viewed the property and you're familiar with the land development ordinance of Princeton, am I correct? Mr. Rubnerian? Yes. Okay. You heard the testimony of Mr. uh, Lesko with respect to the increase of the, uh, three hundred foot buffer uh, because, uh, of the riparian zone. And you're aware of that and you, uh, you're going to, um, go before the DEP to get a, uh, permit or a, uh, a flood hazard area application to a flood here hazard application. And if we get approval, I'll be subject to that, am I correct?
Cool. Be for any, um, individual flood hazard.
We're, we're just not hearing enough of, um, of Mr. Ruth Narion's, uh, words. Uh, and I do want to, just for the record, um, uh, note, Mr. Schatzman, that it was Mr. Weisman who testified, um, to the issues related to the riparian um, buffer. So, uh, as opposed. All right.
Could I, could I suggest if Mr. Ruth Narion has Zoom on his phone? He might try that as an alternative if his, uh, internet connection on his computer isn't a- adequate.
Can you go on the phone?
I will try to.
Do we want to wait for that? Or, Mr. Schatzman, do you want one of your other, um, expert witnesses to testify? It's up to you. I mean, unless it's.
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, uh, problems we have with, uh, Zoom these days, I mean. How about Mr. McDonough will testify as to the planning, uh, investigation he did in the reports?
Great. Can you start, uh, with, um, enumerating your your qualifications, Mr. McDonough?
Sure. Hi there again, everyone. My name is John McDonough, uh, a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. That license is current and in good standing. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, uh, which is our national certification. That's also current and in good standing. I have the good pleasure and fortune of getting to testify throughout the state of New Jersey on a nightly basis, so I get to see the full cross section. And I've been here in Princeton before on a number of projects, including the, uh, the Graduate Hotel, which is now under construction.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
And what did you do to prepare for, uh, your testimony tonight?
So we conducted what I would, uh, call as a standard planning analysis. It generally entails four parts. Number one, we review the existing conditions. Number two, the proposed conditions, and as we know here, this is a minor subdivision uh, to subdivide an existing lawfully plotted parcel of land into two lots. Um, we look at the third part of the analysis considers the zoning criteria that would apply to what the applicant is proposing. Uh, the applicant is asking the board to move on relief. We'll go through that. The planner's done a good job of, uh, outlining it for the board as well. And, uh, we'll run it through the statutory criteria as we would for any, uh, relief application before the board. That's what we did, Richard.
And, uh, are you gonna use, you prepared some exhibits as well, as I understand it?
Yes, uh, just to help the board with some orientation and site condition and site context. Madam Chair, with your permission, I would like to enter a five-slide exhibit. And I'm sharing the screen now.
And we'll mark that electronically as exhibit A one.
Good.
So A one, uh, for the record, is taken from the Mercer County, uh, GIS. It's similar to what your planner had just shown at at the outset. These are screenshots. Uh, just to orient the board with the first slide here of A one that we are looking at a single tax lot. Block eight, six, zero, one, lot number eight, which has at the terminus of Lafayette Court, which has been developed with about nine other lots. We'll talk about that shortly. This particular lot is approximately eighty thousand four hundred and twenty-nine square feet. And as you'll see on the second slide here is I think you can pick up on that. It is developed with a detached, single-family home and the accessory dwelling unit that you heard about as well. On, I'll say, one half of the property. The other half of the property is undeveloped land uh, that, uh, in terms of environmental constraints is is ripe for development and and unconstrained from an environmental standpoint. Um, again, this is part of Lafayette Court, which serves ten residential lots. All of the lots that are on Lafayette Court are undersized except for the subject lot, which is the one oversized lot, uh, in the neighborhood. And we'll come back to that as we go. The proposal is simply to carve the lot in half. Talk about the lot sizes in a little bit, but to retain the dwelling on the one portion of the lot and to create a new dwelling that would be in harmony in scale with the other homes on the street. Frame number three is, this gives the board a little fresh look at what the property looked like. Actually, today we went out there late morning, early afternoon, uh, went to the end of Lafayette Court, floated the drone in the air to get above the trees and look down at the dwelling that you would presently see on the property, which is to remain. So essentially what you see is what you'll get here, um, in terms of what's proposed on this portion of the track. The development is proposed on the left side and sort of to create a bookend, if you will, here, a couplet uh, at the terminus of Lafayette Court with comparable compatibly sized home. Um, that again will serve as sort of a bookend, if you will, for Lafayette Court. Right now, there's sort of an off balance there. This is going to provide some some felt balance and symmetry at the end of the road. And then this gives a broader context. Bottom of the screen, we're looking at Lafayette Court. And just for orientation, this would be looking to the west, so north is approximately to the right from this vantage point. The nine or so other homes on Lafayette Court would fall off on the bottom of the vantage point here. So again, the dwelling that I just showed you in frame number three appears in frame number four to the right-hand side. Um, there's the trampoline in the backyard, which you saw in the in the prior frame as well. And the proposed dwelling would go in this, uh, un- undeveloped area on the left-hand side. Similar compatibility in terms of mass and scale with what we see on the street. And again, nicely infilling, uh, available land on the on the subject site. Neighborhood compatibility is certainly a key consideration of any variance application. Uh, the subdivision here of this parcel of land, this eighty thousand square foot parcel of land would result in zoning relief from your R two zone district whereby the minimum lot size requirement is sixty-five thousand three hundred and forty square feet. Lot eight point oh one, which will retain the existing dwelling, is going to be forty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-one square feet. And then lot eight point oh two for the proposed dwelling is thirty-nine thousand and two square feet. And then lot eight point oh two for the proposed dwelling is thirty-nine thousand and two square feet. There is interrelated relief as to lot depth on lot number eight point oh one. Uh, based on the way you measure lot width, I'm sorry, lot depth in your ordinance, the engineer can certainly talk about this. Uh, there are two um, there are two dimensions that are taken into account on lot eight point oh one where the minimum requirement would be a hundred and seventy-five linear feet. The applicant is asking the board to move on a hundred and twenty point oh one feet and one fifty-two point four seven feet. Over on the eight point oh two side, again, the minimum requirement being one hundred and seventy-five linear feet for depth. We're looking at one hundred and twenty point oh one feet and one sixty-six point seventy-seven. Both dimensions fall short of the one seventy-five requirement. And then lastly, again, this all interrelates to the, the lot size relief that the applicant is asking for here with respect to lot frontage. Over at eight point oh one, the minimum requirement would be one hundred and thirty-one point two-five feet. The applicant is asking the board to move on one sixteen point oh two feet. And then on the other side, eight point oh two, one twenty-five point sixty-six feet. So uh, again, that's the relief that the applicant is asking the board to move on. In consideration of that relief, we look at the remainder of the neighborhood. And this again is sort of the, the end of Lafayette Court. So what you see here is a color-coded neighborhood compatibility map that shows three different colors on here, actually four colors. And recall the smaller size lot that the applicant is proposing on the subject lot, which is laid out in, in yellow here. And this orientation is slightly different than what I just showed you. We're now looking at north to the top of the sheet. So the prior frames were looking sort of uh, from the side angle here. Thirty-nine thousand and nine square feet is the minimum lot size that's being proposed for one of the lots. And we find in this light blue color one, two, three, four, five, six lots, six of the nine lots that Lafayette Court serves that are also less than that thirty-nine thousand square feet. So we've got a super majority, a statistical majority of the lots on that Lafayette and the Lafayette neighborhood that are less than thirty-nine thousand square feet. We've got three other lots which are also non-conforming with respect to the sixty-five thousand square foot range. They fall larger than the applicant's largest lot size, which the other lot, as you've heard, is going to be forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one square feet. And these fall in that range between the forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one square feet and the minimum lot size requirement of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty square feet. The important point, all nine of these lots on Lafayette Court are non-conforming with respect to the sixty-five thousand square foot minimum. But for one lot, which is the lot at the end, uh, which whether it was purposeful or not, the home that is there is built to the corner uh, on half of the lot. So there is ample space to create um, an otherwise compatible building. And the engineer can certainly go into this, the architect can go into this, but the mass and scale of the building is going to be in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood, particularly on the Lafayette Street. Obviously, as we work our way beyond Lafayette, some of the other lots which are served by other streets, the lots get larger. But this uh, particular lot has a clear association with the lots that are on Lafayette. They're all interconnected and served by the, the same street. So in terms of the planning justifications for the dimensional relief that I just uh, gave the board, maybe just to keep it simple here, we'll go back to that's a, a good one there. Uh, we're going to reconcile this, as counsel said, under the flexible seat balancing test. There's some relevant case law here that pertains to neighborhood harmony. I'll explain that to the board as well. I'm not a lawyer, but planners operate within a legal framework, so we certainly give deference to what the, the case law has to say. Um, as you heard through counsel, this is going to be reconcilable under the C2 balancing test whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh any detriments on the positive side. The lot sizes, the home sizes are more in harmony with the area than an oversized lot. The case that I'll point to there for starters is known as the Kaufman case, which found a similar basis for lot dimensional relief as a better zoning alternative where two smaller lots were more in harmony with the neighborhood than one massive lot, which would produce a massive building that was out of context with the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, the project delivers new housing stock and a permitted use, which explicitly serves the public good. The buildings are intended to be architecturally pleasing and compatible with the neighborhood. They'll add aesthetic value, they'll add quality. And lastly, the project will promote our conventional planning goals of efficient land use and variety of land uses in appropriate locations. This all comes back to the land use law and those fundamental purposes of zoning, especially Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses. Purpose I, that's the planning goal for aesthetics and mass and scale that's in harmony with the neighborhood. And then for the planning goal for efficient use of land, keeping the dwelling that's there, working only within the space that is presently un- undeveloped. Flipping that to the negative criteria, and this is the balancing that the applicant is asking the board to move on. None of the sea relief that I mentioned above, of which are dimensional in nature, not bulk in nature, in terms of the building mass and scale. And if I didn't say it, I will say it, that the project has been designed to comply with all bulk controls in terms of the floor area ratio, the building footprint, the building coverage, building height, the building setbacks on all sides and no relief being requested for parking whatsoever. So the buildings would conform. It's the lots uh, that do not conform. As I said, the neighborhood compatibility map shows six of the nine lots are smaller than the smallest lot that the applicant is proposing on Lafayette Court. We know from a planning standpoint, lot sizes control home sizes. And you don't see the lot lines in the real world. You see the buildings. And again, as I said, the mass and scale of these buildings are going to be compatible with the neighborhood. The above analysis would satisfy the lack of negative criteria under the case that was mentioned by counsel at the outset, the Dalmaia versus Lacy holding. Um, and then lastly, we'll also point out for the board, uh, the court in Green Meadows versus Montville affirmed that Kaufman case that I talked about in the beginning, uh, quote, holding that the this is the quote of the court, "The benefits of zoning and more harmonious lot sizes could be seen as substantially outweighing any detriment." And of note, Kaufman case that I started with, uh, affirmed, the court affirmed a board approval of two undersized lots. The Green Meadows case that I talked about at the end, um, reversed a board denial of two undersized lots. And again, I can certainly come back to any of these exhibits as we go. Um, I know the board would certainly like to hear more detail about the proposed layout here and some of those engineering aspects, but just flipping you through my exhibits here, um, again, accentuating that very last exhibit that we do have good neighborhood harmony here by splitting this lot in half consistent with what we see on the neighborhoods. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll stop share and I'll, I'll yield to uh, counsel here for any redirecting or reference from the board of public.
Well, can you reshare?
Sure.
Um, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, the, I guess it was slide five with the color-coded. Um, can you just testify as to why you um, chose to look only at lots to the east and not at all to the west or very, very little to the west?
These lots, if, if this is populated by our GIS, we, we put it in the criteria. And actually, the lots that you see in white are all conforming. These are all conforming lots. So they're greater than the sixty-five thousand square foot minimum requirement. Now, one may say this lot has an association with those lots, but the, the point I wanted to make is that from a physical interconnection standpoint, this lot, the subject lot relates to the plating of land on uh, Lafayette Court.
So you consider the, the subject lot to be part of the neighborhood to the east and not part of the neighborhood or community to the west? Is that?
That's the distinction that I'm making, Madam Chair. And I think I think this may help as well, is that these homes are oriented inward towards Lafayette Court.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the sort of wrapping around the cul-de-sac wall there. And um, we certainly can uh, preserve trees along the back there to maintain that separation. It looks like one of the adjacent homes has some thing here, using it for some soccer recreational use and some backyards. And then, of course, the homes that you see in the distance as well. So there is, there is some good separation vertically in place. It's what makes it sound beautiful.
Um, and I had one other question, and that had to do with the compatibly sized home testimony and um, on a mass and scale with what's on the street. And what I'm seeing, the, the existing house on the existing lot is of a very different mass and scale than the house in, more in the foreground, which is which would be sort of the, the other neighboring house to the new one. Uh, if it's to be approved and I'm would like to hear your thoughts. And maybe this is more of a question for the um, uh, architect when we get there. But um, do you expect the, the mass and scale of the house to be closer to the existing dwelling or um, are you factoring in the, the size and mass of the, of the other house, uh, the, the, the much, much larger one that's in the foreground?
Well, we were looking at the neighborhood as a whole, Madam Chair. I did not, uh, Oprah uh, to see if this adjacent house was granted any relief or not, if it's oversized in the context of the zone. And I'm not applying, implying that it is by any stretch. Um, I did not, I did not check that. But uh, we're looking at the, the greater neighborhood here.
Okay. Um, Mr. Cohen?
Uh, just a point of clarification, and maybe this can be better answered by uh, the engineer. But the, the grassy area that is to the left of the screen here, I don't believe belongs to a neighbor. I believe that's a portion, a less treed portion of the subject lot that we're subdividing here. And I just wanted to find out, number one, whether I'm correct. And number two, point out that um, as a potential location for the building uh, to push it back into that area would save a lot more mature trees, which was one of the uh, recommendations of staff that the applicant looked for ways to save, you know, to have less tree removal. Um, so I, I'd like to have a little better sense of uh, whether there's an opportunity there. I know that would result in a longer driveway uh, and more impervious coverage, but I think on balance, it might be preferable.
It's a, it's a great question. And I think I'll refer the board to, I probably could pull this up on the screen as well. Sheet one of the engineering plans do contain an aerial photograph. And uh, I'll yield to the engineer for, for confirmation, but it looks like the lot line of the subject does end at the tree row. Um, and that open area, I thought that the soccer area um, is on another lot, is on lot number twelve. And
I think that the uh, the aerial view that Mr. Lesko showed also um, would support that reading of this.
I think, Madam Chair, I think, yeah, I do have it here. Let me see if I can pull this up for the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is sheet one of the engineering plans. I'd have to really use my eyes. It looks like twelve twenty-eight twenty-two is the date of the plans. I don't know if that's current or not, but as for the purposes of what I'm showing here, um, you can see the outbound of the property and that open area uh, at least from this vantage, looks like it's on lot twelve.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, for clarifying that. Are there other que- oh, Mr. Mr. Cohen, do you have other questions? Okay, other questions uh, for Mr. McDonough? From board members? Okay, um, Mr. Rupnerian, are you? I see that you're back.
I, I think it's all set up. You would think that a one-get connection from Verizon would actually allow my laptop to work, but I guess not everything works at times. But I
Much better now.
Yeah, mu- yeah, much better now. So maybe um, you, you can start over again. Mr. Schatzman, do you want to repeat?
Sure. Uh, well, Mr. Rupnerian, um, you heard the testimony of uh, Mr. Weisman. And uh, he, and he and uh, Mr. Bridgers joint a memo talks about an absolute letter interpretation, which if we got approval, we would get uh, stormwater management. Uh, can you design a stormwater system, system, management system? Uh, in your view as an engineer for a major development, because you can't get credit for the uh, impervious surface, you're taking off the lot that that we're subdividing off. Could you, in your opinion, can you satisfy Mr. Uh, Weisman?
I believe we can, because the new dwelling that was proposed on lot eight point zero two, essentially what we designed originally under the minor stormwater provision was an infiltration water quality system um, for the proposed impervious surface on the property. The other component that we're going to have to address is the stormwater detention, the rate reductions that are required for major developments. I do believe that given the whole location of the house, it would be possible to design a detention system it in order to preserve some of the trees on the property and to minimize disturbance to the riparian zone. It most likely will have to be an underground detention system, which will be located either in front of the dwelling or both in combination with the front portion of the dwelling and under the uh, proposed driveway. But I do believe that we can design a stormwater management system for a major project in compliance with the town's ordinance.
And how about the riparian zone increased to thirty, uh, three hundred feet rather? What, 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 how do we plan on going to the DEP on that one?
So in essentially a three hundred foot wide riparian zone is going to encompass the entire property. Uh, DEP does have under uh, there's a table in the flood hazard area rules that basically allocates a certain amount of area for construction of a new home, construction of driveways and other improvements to a property. And they do limit the amount of disturbance that one can complete, can create for those various activities. The dwelling itself, for instance, within a three hundred foot wide riparian zone, five thousand square feet is allocated for construction of a dwelling. Um, for the driveway, I believe it's six thousand square feet is allocated for that. And then they have a catch-all other category for the activities that are not listed, which would allow us to utilize that for up to six thousand square feet. And each activity is independent of the other. So in this particular property, I believe we would be allowed somewhere in the neighborhood, perhaps of about seventeen thousand square feet of total land disturbance. Which, on with the current design that we have, we were actually disturbing point thirty-four acres of land, which is about fourteen, almost fifteen thousand square feet of ground. So I do believe we're going to be able to fit within the limits established by the regulations for construction of this dwelling. And in addition to that, any additional disturbance that would be necessary for a major project.
And of course, uh, before, uh, it goes without saying, if this is approved, uh, Mr. Weisman has to see that we've gotten this, because as we know, the DEP has exclusive jurisdiction over this. And he's not going to sign anything until he sees the plans and the fact that the uh, DEP has approved it.
Correct.
If he doesn't approve it, then we can't proceed, at least not under this application, correct?
Yes.
And then you saw Mr. Sandusky's uh, letter and their minor things to correct on the map. So we have no problem with that, am I right?
Correct. We could address all of uh, Mr. Sandusky's comments.
And uh, they want separate utilities for the existing house and the ADU, and we have no problem with that. And is your understanding that the applicatus to the seventy-two replacement trees, am I correct?
Correct.
And they would apply for the tree removal permit required by the Princeton ordinance, am I correct?
Yes.
Are there any questions, Mr. Rupnerian, by anybody? The Weisman? Mister Lesko?
Not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Well, then can we add Mr. Travis then, the architect, because he's got a Okay, well, then can we add Mr. Travis then, the architect, because he's going to describe the house? Uh, because you have to find that the house fits in with the neighborhood, as mentioned by Mr. McDonough on Delmar versus Lacy. If you feel that the house is out of quilt with the neighborhood, then it's, we don't prove the lack of the negative criteria and the the application fails. So, Mr. Travis, would you please be uh state your qualifications for the board, please?
You're on mute.
Uh, my name is Francis Travis. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, and I've done numerous uh how houses for bogey construction, including one over on Armor Road. Um, and uh, um, I think probably the best thing is just share my screen and just show you what the elevation of the house looks like. And I can speak to what John McDonough started about a little bit about the bookend of of
I I think we need a little more on your on your qualifications, Mr. Travis. Um, I also want to just double check the spelling of your name, because I thought I heard you say T R E V.
V is, it's T R E V E S.
V E S, okay, so
Right.
Green says some says V I S.
Yeah, uh, I I might, I have, uh, I'm
Why don't you give, why don't you give your background and and whether you testified before planning and zoning boards in uh municipalities throughout the state?
Sure, okay, I'm 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 a licensed architect since nineteen eighty-eight. I'm a graduate of Carnegie Mellon School of Architecture in nineteen seventy-nine. I have a masters, a one-year masters from Columbia University in nineteen eighty-two. Um, and I've been largely uh practicing um in uh in the in the sector of K-12 school, schools, however, more recently I've been uh working on uh residential design. And um uh I've completed um several houses in Princeton. Um, and uh, um, I think uh, um, I can, I can, I can give you my my license number if that's relevant.
That that's okay. I appreciate you're giving a little bit more um context. We accept your qualifications.
Okay, um.
Alright, so you designed this house for uh for Boji, and so would you go through the house and explain to the board so they can make a determination that a hats, house fits in with the neighborhood, please?
Yes, um, I think I have to probably bring up the the plan and the elevations, if I can share my screen. Does everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
And this is from the plan set, correct?
Um, yeah.
Their plans filed with the application was more.
Yep, right.
Uh, this is a, this is a street view. And uh let me, let me see if I can also call up the plan too, so I can go back and forth between the two.
Uh, Jerry, this was not from the plan set. This was submitted after the uh subdivision plans were received.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. So let's mark that as exhibit A two. And Mr. Travis, what should we call them, just um?
Uh, well, I I would call uh drawing one, exhibit one, which is the plan. And this, and this shows a plan of a house that's approximately four thousand eight hundred and six square feet. And it's sixty, it's what, sixty-nine square feet less than uh the 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 FAR required.
And and what's the square footage?
Travis, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you maximize this image on your screen so that we can see it a little bigger? Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Right. Um, so uh, this, this is the 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 essential frontage. And um, uh, we're not, we're not going to get into the variance. That'll be something we'll deal with later. But it essentially just shows the layout of 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 a three-car garage, living dining, open full-floor plan on the first floor. And the second floor gets set back significantly on on the second floor, um, to which we think um is a better fit and marrying marrying to the sort of one and a half story uh property that's sort of bookending it, that that's the existing property to the, I guess it's to the uh northwest. So um if I show you the the front elevation, the second floor of this is set back to try to make it look a little bit more like a, let's just say, a one and a half story house. These are hip roofs, which try to keep the bulk of it a little bit lower. Um, but again, to try to keep it a little bit more compatible with with the uh adjacent house on the cul-de-sac.
And let's mark that as exhibit A three.
And yet, at the same time, where it's it's not, it's not strictly one and a half story, it's a two-story. So it's sort of a transitional massing between the one and a half story house that's existing and the larger house that's at the adjoining property. Um, I guess it's just, uh, if you're going down into the cul-de-sac, it would be the 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 house on the on the left that looked like it had a a much larger massing, you know, and footprint.
And what is the square footage?
Square footage is is four thousand six, eight hundred and six square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and this this portion projects out uh from the lower por- portion about eight feet, and it starts at this alignment. And this lo- upper part is is set back almost sixteen feet from this front wall. However, this this uh upper story here in this profile is set in, and there's a, there's an upper balcony. So the hip hip roof line here uh tries to, you know, snug back the the overall massing and profile that would be up against the the cul-de-sac. And the house itself, I believe, is about thirteen feet behind the the required um setback line. So it's it's got some distance between the required setback and and the front wall of the house, which is this portion.
You've uh visited a neighborhood, you feel, in your opinion, as an architect, that this house fits in with uh what Mr. uh McDonough uh defined as a neighborhood?
Uh, yes, I think it's it's got a lot of traditional character. It's got some transitional prairie-style influence to it. Um, and it's, it's a custom home. It's not really, it's not a builder home plan.
There anything else you want to add about the uh house?
It has, it had, it has, it has side, it has siding, uh dark panels, asphalt shingles, and uh a uh some kind of natural stone base to it.
What's your testimony, Mr. Travis?
I I think that's, that's all that's needed for
Questions from the board?
I'm curious about the comparison of this proposed dwelling and the existing dwelling on the other part of the what would be a subdivided lot. The comparison of uh the the footprint in square footage and the height of the structure. Do you have any any kind of mock-up that shows that I thought I heard you say that this and please correct me if this is wrong, uh, that this house is more of a scale and mass with the house to the left of the um
No, I I I think I said that it's sort of, it's sort of transitions between the two.
I see, I see.
I think that you expressed a concern that that, you know, you didn't want to have something that was so small, you know, and that was like a one and a half story that was very similar to what's on 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 the adjoining lot at the end, that that essentially is going to stay pretty much the same, but you, but um, this sort of tries to tie the two types of characters together is is what I'm trying to say. It's a, it's it's got a little bit larger bulk because it's going up two stories, and it's not a one and a half story, but at the same time, it tries to reduce the bulk of the two-story by having this portion project out, this wall project out from the second floor. So these are not in the same alignment.
Yes, understood.
Right.
Um, and can you, do you know what the the square footage of the footprint is, the com- comparison um is with the existing home and and the height?
Well, if if I, I think uh our our planner has some comparisons, but but uh from the exist, the existing home uh is is thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-one square feet. No, that's imperfect scale, excuse me, um. Where is that? Yeah, the main dwelling is is three thousand six hundred square feet. So it's 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 smaller by, it's, yeah, four hu- it's smaller by um about a thousand square feet.
How about the size of the ADU?
Yeah. The the propos- the proposed uh well, let's just, let's just say the proposed dwelling roof area is is three thousand four hundred and ninety square feet. And the the roof area or of the existing dwelling is three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So they're 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 very much in in compatibility with each other. And that's from their, from the impervious coverage footprint of just the roof area. And and the height, the heights of the dwel- of the two, well, the the height of the existing house um is thirty-two. Let's say. Max, no, that well. I think, I think it basically is in 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 the project planner's table, he basically says that they're both going to be less than thirty-five feet, so I think that um
Okay.
They're both going to comply.
Yeah, I I see your point.
Right, right.
Are you counting as part of the roof? And I see your hand, Mr. Cohen. I'm sorry to um, put you off, but the counting as part of the roof, the overhang that goes over the ups
This part, this part here? Yes.
Okay.
So and so we're we're talking about the ru- the roof, the roof area?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the projected, the projected roof area will be larger than the actual interior area.
Understood.
So these are, these are more extended overhangs to give it more shadow and more character, I suppose.
Yeah.
It's a little bit unique on that, on that level.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the comment about the difference between the two lots, the existing house and the new one because of the ADU. My my recollection is from our uh zoning report from from staff that they're both very close, both lots are very close to the FAR limit. Um, given the size of the lots, and it makes sense that if this is one structure, it would be larger than the other house, which part of the floor area is taken up by the by the ADU. So it's, it's just a comment in terms of you would, you wouldn't expect them to be the same. Uh, I do want to raise a question regarding the floor area um for the, this is not so much for the applicant, but for uh the board's consideration. I always am a little bit um reluctant to allow an applicant with a variance application to avail themselves of the FAR bonus uh which this applicant is doing. Uh, it was mentioned in the staff report. So essentially, by dividing this lot into two two non-conforming lots, the developer is gaining a total square foot uh bonus uh of the amount of construction they can have on the two lots taken together. And it feels to me like that's not really the intent of the FAR bonus that we have in our zoning. So um, I'm just putting it out there for the board to consider whether that might be a condition that we would want to impose in granting the variance that the the FAR bonus would not be available to the applicant.
Thank you for that. Um, are there other um questions for um any of the expert witnesses from members of the board or staff?
If I could ask Mr. Travis a question, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just confused. Did you prepare these plans? Were they prepared by somebody else?
No, they were prepared by me.
They were, okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions from board members or staff, I will open up. Um, oh, I'm sorry, two, two hands are up. Mr. McGowan and Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen, did you, you have another?
I do.
Okay, um, so Alvin, you first, and then we'll go back to Mr. Cohen.
Very quickly, I'm not sure if I heard it. Um, there was an issue of needing a variance for a setback for the side entry garage. Has anybody that was in the engineering report, has anybody addressed that?
I think so. I think they said they were not going to seek that variance, and instead were going to comply with the neighborhood character ordinance. Did I, is that correct, Mr. Schatzman?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that that went away.
Well, the only varieties you have are lot size, lot depth, and lot frontage, period. Side yards, backyards, setbacks, FAR, uh, impervious coverage will all be complied with with the R two T zone.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, the the last question I have, and I'm not sure which uh professional this is for, but I'm curious about the status of the cul-de-sac, the new cul-de-sac that is being proposed as part of this application. Uh, it's a a chunk of land that's being removed from the property. Um, I know this is a private road, Lafayette is a private road, so I'm not sure that it becomes part of the right-of-way, but maybe the right-of-way belongs to a homeowners association and that cul-de-sac becomes part of the homeowner association right-of-way. Um, the reason I'm asking is that, you know, it's, it seems quite possible that other visitors to Lafayette may drive onto this cul-de-sac, you know, when they get to the end of the road to turn around, and and just wanted to be clear that that's what's anticipated uh by the applicant in terms of this being uh in some sense, public space, this cul-de-sac.
So the cul-de-sac that's shown, actually, it's an existing cul-de-sac, and the property line does not include the area occupied by the cul-de-sac. The property line for the for the existing parcel lot eight goes around that cul-de-sac, so it's already either owned by the association, but it's definitely not a part of this property.
Okay, it's, so it's a pre-existing
Correct.
condition, thank you.
Uh, and if I might add, it's also Councilman Cohen, uh, just for your knowledge, it's it's not your traditional kind of cul-de-sac turnaround. It's kind of one of those looping roads uh like we see over by Greenholm or elsewhere, and then there's a bulb on the end of it.
Yeah, yeah, I've been been down that route. Uh, one of my kids had a friend who lived there, so I'm familiar.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Councilman Cohen had made. Um, if the board is going to Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Councilman Cohen had made. Um, if the board is going to consider um. Removing the uh proportional FAR for this. The existing dwelling and lot would require the removal of a portion of the breezeway. Which was proposed with the original subdivision to meet the FAR. The table that was provided with the documents did not include the proportional FAR, so there was no bonus. Uh, but if it did go back down to the twelve and a half percent, uh, that breezeway would be required to be removed to meet FAR.
Okay.
Uh, I I think the applicant was also removing the the porch on the back of the existing as well. And. And and the pool, that those are also parts that are coming off the existing. Property.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Any other questions from board members? Or this applicant? Um, okay, so I will open up for public comment. Um, and there's one member of the public that's um had her hand up for. Pretty much the whole meeting, uh, so I assume that that Ms. Leahy wants to speak. Oh, maybe not. Um. Oh, it looks, uh, oh, she's being brought over, good. Um, any other members of the public who wish to um address the board? Uh, comments, questions, et cetera, um. Please raise your hand virtually. I see there are um six. Remaining members of the public now that Ms. Leahy's been brought over. Okay, so. A- after Ms. Leahy speaks, um, uh, Jop Ketting will have an opportunity. Again, anybody else who wants to speak, please raise your hand now. Um, welcome, Ms. Leahy. Uh, Mr. Muller will swear you in. Um, and then you'll have, uh, and then the three-minute clock will start to to count down and. Um, so go ahead, Mr. Muller.
You can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name.
Yep, my name is Catherine with a K. Catherine E R I N E, last name is Leahy, L E A H Y.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for hosting this tonight. Um, I um, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for allowing the public to all to respond to this um variance request. I'm actually at fifty Lafayette Road West, which is one of the properties adjacent to this development project. Um, actually, in the drone images, it was the uh, uh, not the larger house to the left that you were referring to. Um, Chairwoman, but the house actually to the right, which was kind of partially cut off. And um, there's a couple of things that I'd just like to say. I know my time is limited. The first is that. Um, I know many of my neighbors are actually on on this Zoom tonight as well. Um, I will just put out there that many of us actually were small street, were a private street. And many of us actually were away for the last week to two weeks when notification of this came. And actually, I I would say a good percentage of us actually had a meeting at three o'clock today when we opened our mail and came back from. Holidays and college drop-offs and and what have you, so um, so while notification did go out. Um, I would say that all the neighbors on Lafayette Road Road West were not. Uh, aware actually that some of this was was taking place, so I'm glad that many of them were able to come to the this Zoom call tonight. Um, there are a couple of general things that I'd like to um to raise and for consideration for this group. And that is um the impact on the street itself. We are a private street. The roadway is fragile. Um, there's going to be many construction trucks coming through for this type type of development. And we'd like to have some sort of assessment on um sort of the infrastructure of the street itself and um. Any type of traffic noise, um, things like that. Uh, the second area, we would love to have a a more information on if possible. Is the true impact on the environment. There is Stony Brook. I know we sort of addressed it. I think, Mr. Lasco, you might have, um, I'm sorry if I if I got that incorrect, but. The impact on the environment as it pertains to Stony Brook, as a, there is a brook that passes through. That that property, um, and uh we are very, you know, concerned about the impact that will have on water drainage. And on the environment in general. Um, and then in addition to that, I know that the requested variances for size. Seem within the scope of the neighborhood. Um, but I would respectfully submit that, well, six out of the nine houses may have smaller lots, four are are larger, four of the lots on this. Uh, in this neighborhood are larger, and we just want to ensure that the size and scope of the houses really does fit into the neighborhood. Um, and I, and I, we've heard a lot of talk about that tonight, but I think the neighbors here at fifty Lafayette. Road West, as we call it, not court, um, would like to hear a lot more about these pieces. Um, we would also like to say that if possible, we'd really like to maybe. Uh, delay um an assessment from this group tonight so that the neighbors uh in this area. Can really have a chance to review um all the submissions, including the last-minute submissions for today. Um, and with that, I think my time is done. Madam Chairwoman, you are on mute.
Thank you. Um, sorry about that. Thanks for your comments. Um, uh, Mr. Ketting?
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
The truth, yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
So my name is Yop Ketting. Uh, last name spelled K E T T I N G.
Thank you.
Um, I live at thirty Lafayette Road West. Um, we've been here for uh thirty-two years. Um, just wanted to uh reiterate what Kate was saying. Um, it's a private road. Um, we last had to pave it because it is a private road at the resident's own expense in nineteen ninety-three. And it's kind of in a deteriorated condition, and we're very concerned. Um, with building that there's heavy construction or big potholes in the road. And with heavy construction vehicles coming in. Um, you know, the the potholes, the asphalt will crumble on the corner, on the sides of the potholes, making them even bigger. And deeper, so we do need to have some understanding of how this whole situation is going to be mitigated and also. Um, from seeing construction in other places where there's a lot more room for parking, like, like, say, on Hodge Road. Um, how is this going to work in a relatively small. Uh, area when the, you know, the roofer and the electrician and the plumber are all there and other subcontractors are all there at the same time. Um, you know, we don't want to see stuff spill over um into, you know. In front of our houses, and so other than that also, so I don't run out of my three minutes. Um, the argument has been made that by these, it's okay to split these properties. Um, because the resultant properties would be about the same size as some of the existing properties. However, it's my belief that this zoning was put in. When a lot of the existing properties were already in existence, so at that time, the zoning commission presumably made the. Uh, assumption or the, had the position that the existing. You know, properties, it was, it were too small, uh, undersized, and 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 so there was. For them to make, they upzoned and and they upzoned for a reason, in my view, and so. I have to, do have to ask the question, like, why now are we saying that? It's okay not to adhere uh to the thinking behind the zoning that was created uh whenever it was back when. And again, I I also just want to say that um. We have not had a chance, this this apparently was sent out, I was away, this was apparently sent out, the notice. Um, sometime after August twenty-second, when I, when I left to go away. So I didn't receive it until coming back from Labor Day weekend, and I was sick on Monday, and I really haven't had a chance to review it. And from talking to uh or emailing one of my neighbors, they said they hadn't seen the notice. And they also were out of town, so again, some kind of adjournment if possible on. You know, if I'm making a vote on this, uh, I think would be appropriate. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, I see one other member of the public with uh her hand raised, Janine Sorokin. Um, Carrie, if you could bring. Her over.
Thank you, Janine Sorokin. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
We'll need to swear you in, sorry to interrupt.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, could you state your full name and spell your last name?
Sure, Janine Sorokin, S's in Sam, O R, O K E N. And I live at sixty-seven Rosedale Road. That is the soccer field in the pictures. That's, that's our yard. Um, and I know myself and other neighbors on Rosedale Road are. We're very um protective of the stream that goes behind our homes. So I just wanted to make a comment that that's very important to us. Um, my husband also sits on the board of the watershed, and I know that um the streams all throughout Princeton are a big topic. Um, especially over the last few years. Um, so I will definitely make sure that that. The Watershed Institute takes a look um at all this information, just to make sure that uh it is um. It is within our rights uh to make, to protect the water for uh for Princeton. And that is all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see. Mr. Cohen, your hand is up. Um, I'm just gonna put one more call out for members of the public. Who might wish to speak. We have um six folks. Uh, interested members of the public. I don't see any other. Hands going up, so I'm gonna close the public comment portion of the meeting um and turn to you, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, so I I had two responses to two of the public comments. Um, one. In response to Janine's concern about the stream. Um, it's a question whether neighbors will have an opportunity when this goes to DEP. For adjudication of whether. You know, it gets this reduction in the riparian buffer from three hundred to fifty feet. Is that a kind of public process also? I don't know. Who, if anybody knows the answer to that, but is that a sort of another bite at the apple for the neighbors to um? To have input on on this particular concern.
Mr. Wiseman, do you have, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Schatzman, please go ahead.
Yes, there, there is um under uh, the the DEP basically has exclusive jurisdiction. It's a case called Mr. Mullin Ostaco versus Edison by Judge uh. Wilson in the uh Law Division in in Millsland County, and yes, they have a right to petition the. Uh, DEP for administrative hearing. And since the DEP has exclusive jurisdiction, they can bring in whatever expertise they want, bring in whatever testimony they want. Et cetera, and so forth. And as far as the road is concerned. Uh. If this is approved. My uh, of course, we can't. Uh, do a performance bond because it's not public. But my my client will would fix any damage to the road. Because of any construction trucks that come about. We're not, no, no. Good builder would leave a road. Uh. Like that. If it were a public road. A lot of municipalities, for instance, your old town Montgomery. Has a developer's construction sequence agreement that says that. So even though this is a private road or private cul-de-sac. My client would be willing to make sure that if there's any damage or increasing potholes in the road. Then in fact, he would repair it to at least the same condition it was before, if not better. So that's the answer to the two concerns. Mr. Cohen is right. There is a administrative hearing on the Administrative Procedure Act before the DEP. Uh, for this type of uh. Permit.
Um, would your client? Be willing to resurface the road if that were uh?
Yeah, yes. Definitely. That's if if it were a public street. Uh, unfortunately, it's a private street, but if it's a, was a public street, that's the norm when you develop. Yeah, you know that from Montgomery Township, that's, that's, that's a requirement. However, because it's not a municipal street, there's no bond, however. You know. They, it could be before CO is issued. Okay, before CO is issued, you should agree and approval before CO is issued. Then uh, Mr. Wiseman or anybody else from the engineering department would go out there. And s- look at the street and deny a CO. If the street isn't up to par, at least as it was before the construction. If not better than after the construction.
Yep.
That's that, and that would be an agreement. I mean, because if it were a public street, that would be the the norm.
Right.
Fortunately, it's, it's not a public street, it's a private street.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to address was Mr. Ketting's speculation about the history of the zoning. Um, again, this is sort of why I had asked Derek the question about the R one B zoning, the. Borough's R one zoning versus the township's R two zoning. Um. I don't know, Derek, do you want, do you want to? Um, answer Mr. Ketting's sort of uh concern or speculation about why the uh. The different. Zoning exists on this property uh than uh to the east uh on on Lafayette.
Uh, I will try. Thank you. Um. At all the lots except for the the subject lot in question are in the former borough, which has. Uh, basically a half an acre as their lot area requirement, twenty thousand square feet, where the two lots uh. That are the subject of the application were in the former township, and they're in a different zone. As you recall, there were two different communities with with two different zones. Um. For many years until two thousand twelve, so uh. It's, it's just a function of them being in two different zones. I think you have to look at the analysis that the planner provided and. Uh, determine whether um the application uh meets the positive criteria. Or if there are any negative components, but um.
But to, just to cut to the chase, these undersized lots to the east are not non-conforming. They're conforming.
They are, they're, they're.
So there was no, there was no change of zoning uh per Mr. Ketting's um speculation. To sort of uh upzone the neighborhood after these buildings were built. Or after the lots were subdivided.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful. Um. Do any of the? Um, do. Our professionals or the applicant's expert witnesses have? Um, an image of aerial or otherwise of the property that shows the um stream bed. The location of the stream bed. I would like to see that, and I'd also like to hear some testimony about the ability to preserve trees. Along the um. Uh, border of the proposed new lot. The degree to which. They can um preserve trees, not just for buffering and for visuals, but for. Um, yeah, no, in environmental benefit. So anybody have a? Any kind of image that shows where that stream bed is?
The the grading plan does show it to some extent, and that might be the best we can do. I looked at the aerial and I couldn't see it, but.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the aerial, on the aerial.
Uh, yeah, I I don't know where the stream bed is. Uh, I know that there's like a little pond, uh, maybe it like flows into that, or if that's what they're talking about. Um, but uh also there's the tree disruption. Map, which, I mean, I I'd be curious to hear from. The the applicant about those trees being removed, because it seems like a lot of them probably. Might not need to be removed, um, but then again, I, I'm not in construction, so. But then again, I I'm not in construction, so I don't know for sure.
I mean, I mean, there appears to be almost ninety-five feet between the rear property line and the new house. So I think that there's a good bit of trees that are going to still remain. Eric, can you pull up the share this?
Show your. Yeah, unfortunately, the tree removal plan doesn't show trees to remain. It only shows trees to be removed. So that's a good point, Mr. Travis. I think there are a lot of trees still to remain, but well, it's still it's still, you know, begs the question of what can be done to save even more trees, in particular around the the rain garden. You know, a lot of those trees are being taken out for the rain garden, and I wonder if there's another approach, like Mr. Rubnerian did talk about how he might address the stormwater requirements if this becomes a major project. And I think some of the things that he talked about, you know, would it really help to reduce this tree removal? Because he was talking about doing it and, you know, doing detention in the front yard or under the driveway and stuff like that.
So can we pull up an image that shows the subdivision plan, the location of the proposed location of the proposed house? Yeah, et cetera.
So unfortunately, I don't have the ability with my phone since my laptop seems to have a mind of its own.
I I think I might be able to do that.
Okay, Francis.
Let me let me try that. That's C four?
Yeah, let's look at sheet number four.
There, I think I think you can see that the house from rear property line and from the arrow that we saw before, that's the open space and the trees start along the property line and then go in. So there's about ninety-five feet to the corner of the house, and I think the area of disturbance, you can see it marked more or less. See the line of disturbance? I can zoom zoom in.
Yes, yeah, please zoom in so people can see the drainage swale as well, the stream.
So the house itself will be located about ninety-five feet from that rear property line, but the limit of disturbance extends probably about twenty-five feet beyond the house.
Sorry, sorry, excuse me.
That's a little close.
Yeah.
So our proposal will leave roughly sixty to sixty-five feet of that wooded area along the rear property line. One option perhaps that we have, if the soils are favorable, would be in lieu of a rain garden to manage stormwater, since we may have to deal with a major development. We could perhaps look at utilizing essentially porous pavement or some sort of a porous medium for the driveway construction. That is an infiltration structure. It is considered a green BMP under the state stormwater management rules. And if the soils are favorable, then we would then be able to minimize or perhaps even completely eliminate the rain garden, which could further reduce the amount of trees that are necessary to be removed for this project to be constructed.
Would it be worthwhile to zoom in on the the cover sheet that shows the aerial of the trees again?
Um, this entire property or this entire lot eight point zero two is wooded. The only portion of the property that really doesn't have heavily woods is the area immediately adjacent to the cul-de-sac, but the rest of the property does have, it's wooded.
Right. And I think if if we disturb trees just outbound of this property line, we would be replacing them, right?
Correct. We are subject to the tree replacement ordinance in Princeton, and we will ultimately comply with the amount of replacement trees that are necessary based on the trees that are being removed. So it is definitely to our advantage to try to save and preserve as much of the mature trees as we can.
And Mr. Rubnerian, do you know just if you're familiar with the property, where on this image the stream bed is?
So if you look a little to the north of the proposed dwelling, that honeycomb hatched area?
This area?
Correct. There's a dotted line that basically goes from the end of that heavy dash line, and it basically, oh, Francis, a little bit to the north or move further up, a little bit more up. So if you follow that heavy dash line that goes across, right there is the stream, the small ditch or channel. And it basically begins at the end of the head wall. There's a concrete head wall at the end of that pipe. And then the stream begins at that point and then flows off to the east.
I see. So the stream is not on the proposed lot. It is on the.
It's between the the dwelling, the ADU and and the proposed new dwelling. So it's in this order right through here.
Okay. All right, that's helpful.
I think I think you can you can also sort of you can sort of see it a little bit suggested in the tree line. But I'm not sure whether it's whether it's it's that clear on the aerial. I think it's better here to just understand that it that occurs really in this area and mostly downstream from this head wall.
Yep.
This is all actually underground. Am I correct, Eric?
The the pipe, yes.
Right. So there's an inlet here, which is part of the neighborhood with street improvement.
So what flows into that stream that then flows to a tributary that becomes a C one is road runoff?
Essentially, it's the road runoff that created the ditch, because it's not a very large ditch. And it begins right at the end of the head wall. And over time, what typically happens with most of the older developments that I've seen in older roads, normally the drainage just picked up in the roadway, and wherever there happens to be a low point is where the discharge would occur. And over time, it just erodes away, erodes away, and it creates its own path.
I'm wondering whether there might be a way to provide for some cleansing of that of that water between the pipe or at the end of the pipe and before it enters the the streamway, the, you know, drain intermittent stream or drainage ditch or however you want to describe it, intermittent stream is how I like to think of it. And I don't know, maybe with Mr. Weisman or one of our professionals could speak to this, whether there's a and I realize this is not on the property, you know, the new lot, but whether there's a a BMP that the property owner might make use of that cleans, you know, takes the road runoff impurities out of that water before it goes to the tributary to Stony Brook. Can you speak to that, Mr. Weisman?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, there's there's manufactured treatment devices that can be used. They're pretty high maintenance type of device, but it's a water quality measure to remove total suspended solids. Something could be added on that drain line between the inlet on the cul-de-sac of Lafayette Court and that head wall. Alternatively, maybe one of the inlets could be removed and a treatment device could be installed.
Is there anything that would be less less expensive, both short term and long term? I'm just thinking, I mean, I assume well, I I'm wondering whether there's maybe a lower tech, but still effective water quality BMP other than a manufactured treatment device. What do you think?
Madam Chair, the typical lower tech devices or treatment systems are usually the rain gardens or bio retention systems. Those generally require a larger footprint, which goes back towards more clearing in order to construct that type of a system. And again, the soils would have to be favorable for that type of system to work, but those are the ones that are generally lower tech, because they don't have any proprietary media or filter or design component to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, so much of this swale is not on the property. I was thinking similar, you know, some kind of constructed wetland or something like that, but you just don't have the length developed to you know, put in the right kinds of plantings and stuff like that. I I fear.
Yeah, and I was just thinking of something at the end of the pipe that allows what comes out of the pipe to slow down and settle before it before the water you know, proceeds proceeds on, because in a heavy rain, I mean, of course, it's just probably going to gush out of the pipe. I don't know how how steady the flow is. I assume not steady at all, but only when it rains or when snow melts. And, you know, depending on how long it's been since it rained, you could it could be pretty dirty water that comes, you know, basically makes its way straight to the C one stream. That's my concern. But I also understand that this is not on the lot that the applicant is interested in creating. So I don't know what kind of you know, requirement we might impose that could mitigate that potential situation. Any any advice on that from any of our professionals that I would appreciate? I think that acquiring a manufactured treatment advice device is probably just too heavy handed, because it is expensive both to install and to maintain, I think, on a annual or semi-annual basis and wouldn't want to have that come back to bite us or the neighborhood for that matter. Are there other questions or comments that board members have? I think there were there was a question about the impact on the street itself, the question about environmental impact.
I think perhaps traffic on on the street itself in terms of the building.
The the traffic and noise of construction vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, I've had some experience with Bogie, and I think he manages that pretty well, depending on what kind of street he's he's working off of. And he he temp that he he's pretty good at sequencing and and keeping his trades so that they're not piling up on one another. There's generally not more than a a couple of a couple of vans on the on the property itself. And he usually brings his his work, his own personal working crew in with residential cars. So there's not really there might be a an additional car or two parked on the on the cul-de-sac itself, but there's not going to be a whole army of folks coming down the street at the same time.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that when a house get built gets built, it can, you know, some days can be pretty loud and disruptive, but I I take your point.
I I the only ones that you, you know, you'd be worried about products or the the concrete trucks that might have to come down. Those are probably the worst of them. And, you know, and 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 the delivery of the of the the framing material on a on a flatbed. But I think, you know, Hamilton, and if you see some of their their trucks, they they'll modify the size of the truck to some extent, depending on what street they have to get down to to deliver. So.
And assuming the the builder has a dumpster on site, can we be assured that the dumpster will be covered at the end of the workday?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and and it'll it'll be emptied on a regular basis. You know, and I think that the, you know, porta potty and everything, it'll it'll be offsite. It'll be off, you know, on on the property itself, you know, all that. It'll be regularly maintained.
Mr. Chow and then Mr. O'Donnell?
Yeah, I have. Can we bring up the tree removal plan? It I've I've looked at online and, you know, it doesn't it's not what we typically see where we see the full inventory of trees. It's it's only showing the trees that are being removed. And even the ones that are being removed are not identified by species, which is typically what we see. And then I'd like to, you know, just bring it up and talk through it and then understand from our staff what what kind of constraints are aren't there in order to guide what, you know, what's allowable to be removed and.
I don't I don't I don't know whether there's an actual tree removal plan, but I can certainly zoom in on.
I I have what was I have it open if I can share my screen. Like, this was what the the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, this is this is what I'm talking about. Do we? Do we have any guidance on what may or may not be removed? Like, I noticed several of the trees are very large. There's a fifty inch diameter tree, fifty-five inch. There's a forty next to the driveway. What's our guidance to kind of retain larger trees, older trees?
Sure, I could jump in or at least start us off, Madam Chair, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So the reason why this looks different than what you might normally see is, you know, the application before you is for subdivision, not a site plan. So the requirements are are lesser and, you know, in some ways, this is more hypothetical than necessarily, you know, what's being approved as as happens with a site plan approval. Ultimately, the underlying zoning and other things in the municipal ordinance will guide what can be built there, including the tree removal ordinance. So that's why this is, you know, lesser than than what you've seen and for a site plan and ultimately will be guided by those things as it would, you know, if even if the the parcel wasn't subdivided or if it was an existing lot and someone was looking to build a single family home.
I see. All right. Thanks. But we so we don't have any specific guidance on preserving larger trees, older mature trees?
I see Derek's hands up if he wants to take that.
Yeah, just typically on a on a single family development like this, the the arborist will meet with the builder and walk the site, and he's usually trying to minimize the number of trees taken down, but they are taking down thirty-nine trees based on this exhibit, and they would have to replace seventy-two trees based on the the replacement ordinance. So the arborist is going to take a lead role in this, and then Dan Weisman will also be involved, but it's you know, we can put a condition if the board's inclined to that the arborist should work, the applicant should work with the arborist to main to save as many of the existing trees that are to be taken down as possible. It's kind of a judgment call. You can't really do it till you get out into the field and see what's going to be impacted by the the area disturbance.
Yeah, many of the mature and healthy trees.
That's fine, Mr. That's fine, Mr. Bridger. I mean, that's a typical subdivision. That's usually the case. We usually get a landscape architect or the arborist in Princeton to try to save as many large trees as possible. And the it's normal for the applicant to work with the arborist to try to save as many possible trees as possible. But sometimes gourds don't realize it's the advantage of the developer to save those trees because those It's the advantage of the developer to save those trees because those trees. To replace them, it's going to cost them a lot more money than if he leaves good, strong. Wide trees there, it saves the developer money as well as helps the municipality out. So. I don't, I don't know of a builder. And my business has been representing builders for the last fifty five years, they won't agree to something like that.
Alright, thank.
I I just want to comment, Phil, to really directly answer your question. There's a sliding scale of how many replacement trees are required. Under the ordinance. Depending on the size of the tree that's taken down.
Okay.
So, like a small tree only requires one replacement, medium tree, two replacements. A big tree requires three replacements, that's that's the incentive that we have in our.
Okay, appreciate that, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Um, and then one other quick question, the 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 retention basin. Or or the rain garden is located to the left of the building i- in this drawing. Is there an option to put it toward the front? Uh, like, like above, um, let me show in this area. And then allow the preservation of the trees off to the left here. I I I assume this area is not wooded or or is it wooded?
It is, but that area is also uphill.
Okay.
Eric, Eric, you said the area was uphill, so really the natural flow of the water is is to where you establish the rain garden, correct?
Okay, I see, okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
You testified that you might not. Build the rain garden because you might need to meet a different slash higher standard for stormwater and might use underground infiltration and. So it's not a, it's not a given that the. Rain garden will exist, do I have that right or?
Yes.
You are correct, Madam Chair.
Um, Mr. Chow, are you?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, or or actually, let me turn first to Mr. Bridgers. Just still up and. No, nothing, okay.
Um, this isn't really a question, it's as much as a comment, we see a lot of applications come through that get neighbors uh. Quite upset and what we found, I think, uh, pretty much as rule is that a little bit of communication goes a long way. And I would really suggest that. Uh, the applicant have some kind of neighborhood meeting. With uh, with the rest of the, this is a neighborhood association, by the way, and I assume the new house will be part of that association as well, once it's built and. Uh, and new neighbors are added. Uh, so I would just, I don't know if we can make this a condition or not. But um, some kind of neighborhood meetings. Uh, and ongoing communication with the neighborhood can really help. Uh, alleviate a lot of stress on on both sides, really, I I believe, so that's all I had to say.
Well, we'll uh, we'll do that, the uh. The applicant will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the board that I had put out there that question about the floor area ratio bonus. And I was hoping to get some. Uh, feedback from other members of the board, how they felt about that, I think, you know, it's one nice way to be responsive to. The neighbors' concerns about the scale of the new house, um, so.
Yeah, I I I uh agree with that, Mr. Mr. Quinn?
I was uh going to, just about to raise my hand to uh to initiate a discussion and to talk about the. Implications, Mr. Weisman, I think, talked about the implications for the. Subdivision or. I support a limitation on. Uh, a condition that the. That the floor area ratio. Bonus uh not be applicable in this case.
I see some other board members nodding their heads, I don't, i- does anyone disagree with that as a? Potential condition, okay.
Do you think this might be a good time to take a break, Madam Chair?
We're almost done.
Are we hoping to complete and?
Sort of rather power through, um, if folks are, if folks are alright with that. I've put a call out for somebody to bring me my um. Laptop charger. Somebody in my background soon. Uh, Mr. Lesko?
Yes, I I saw Mr. Schatzman wanted to respond to that condition, I also had a question on it, so I'll let him go first.
Okay, Richie?
We we'll agree to Mr. Combs' condition.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Lesko?
Just for the record, would that apply to both lots?
Uh, other comments, discussion?
And I I assume, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Yes, no, please.
I assume that a condition of approval will be that the developer will. Uh, repave the entire um. Road or. I think that's, that's where we landed, right, well.
The road, we will repair the road to the condition, at least the conditioner was. Before the. Construction trucks. Uh, came on. If it needs repaving, fine, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
I'm a little confused, Mr. Schatzman, because I thought I heard that. The applicant would repave the entire road, not just. Eh, repair any damage since the road itself is.
Necessary by, if necessary, we will repave the entire road. But you don't know what the conditions will be, we will make it as good, and I think it's fair. For the to the applicant and the board to say that you, the the applicant. Will repair the road. To the conditioner was at least as good, if not better. Uh, than that be. Uh, than it was. Before the construction trucks come, if it needs to be repaired, we will repair it. If it needs to be repaved, we will repave it.
Who makes that determination?
You have inspectors, you have people, suppose I had a major subdivision.
So you would accept a municipal recommendation to repave, uh to resurface the entire road if if the professionals. Determine that the entire road needed resurfacing, okay, I just wanted to be clear about this.
The way it works, the way it works, in a major subdivision. Or with a new road, they they go out and take a look at it. And they say, you've got to, you've got to turn around and you've got to, you can't fix the potholes, there it's too much. You've got to repave the whole road. And that's what happens in a major subdivision. And this. To a major subdivision, that's what I'm doing.
Great, we get that, thank, thank you.
Just. Clarifying for the record.
And thanks, thanks for that, Mr. Quinn, uh, well worth doing, Mr. Bridger and then Mr. Weisman?
Yeah, I just uh. Would like to have some kind of comfort level with repairing the road, uh, if you've been to the site. The road's not pristine at this point, so. I don't want staff to get caught in a. Back and forth with the applicant and possibly go to litigation, because maybe there can be a. A televised, a, you know, take a video of the street uh. So that we can see the condition, because it's not a new road. And uh, it will get. Worn a little bit with some of the construction, so, I mean, what is? Where does it get replaced, I think that's the question Dan and I are going to be asked when. This project's done, so.
We'll take a picture now. And you can go out there, Dan can go out there, we'll take pictures. And then you have something to compare it with, that's a good point.
Does the association have a fund for for?
What?
Does the association said that they hadn't done work on it since the nineties or something? Do they have a a fund that that's established to repair the road at a regular interval? On their, and if so, uh contributing to the fund in some way. Might be the the appropriate way, rather than, you know, because. If they're planning on repaving the road within the next five years, the whole road. The the developer shouldn't be responsible for doing that in advance of when they they're planning on doing it, they might. Provide some. Resource towards it. But not, you know, but certainly if it, if there's a pothole.
I I don't want to go into the a whole discussion of what the homeowner association. Books look like or what they're.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, that's just not relevant to us here, um. It is relevant that it's been testified to that the road was last paved in nineteen ninety three. Um, I think people have testified and we can all assume that the road is in. Um, not good condition, and what I'm hoping, and maybe Mr. Mueller can help with this, is that we can require that the road be. Um, in better shape when all is said and done and not um returned to its current. Uh, not great. Uh, condition, so I I don't. I'll stop talking, Jerry, and let you opine.
That's fine, we'll do that, we'll we'll make it a better condition than it was before we even get started.
I I thought the agreement two minutes ago was that if township professional, if municipal professionals. Required repaving, that the the developer would repave it. That was the agreement, in fact, earlier on. An hour ago. Rich, you also agreed that you would repave it.
Yeah, okay, fine, we'll repave it, it'll be better. It'll be better condition than than it was right now, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Bridger?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure sure it's an agreement, so. As far as I'm concerned, Mr. Mueller, if we agree to it. Uh, you know, the legality of that cannot be called under question, that's my, and so would you advise what that had effect?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, fine, so that's your, there's your, there's your guarantee.
Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Bridger and then Mr. Weisman?
No, I'm I'm fine with that response, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dan?
Uh, yeah, just I wanted to echo again what Derek said, and it's kind of a moot point at this point, but um. Just clarification that it will be repaved or it will be repaved at the request of.
No. Instead, it will be repaved.
This could be repaved, okay? It'll be better conditioning after the construction of the house than it is now.
But that's.
I mean, is this? About the whole road or the area just at the cul-de-sac?
We're talking about the road.
Road.
So I have a question, uh. About uh, going back to drainage for just a minute, um. I assume, Mr. Rubenarian, that your stormwater plan. Uh, this stormwater management plan for the new lot, should it be approved? Would be such that no. Um. Runoff from the new lot. Um, reaches the. Stream bed without. Um, being. Infiltrated or not or uh cleaned.
So the requirement is that any of the traffic surfaces, the new traffic surfaces, which would be the driveway that's being proposed. Runoff from that area has to be treated. To eighty percent total suspended solid, so yes, we will treat the runoff from the driveway.
Yep.
But the water coming off from the roof is called clean water. So that doesn't have to be treated, if you build a house, water comes off a roof, that's the DEP standard, it's.
I know it's the DEP standard, I have a quarrel with it, but. But it's not, but I understand, so do the property slope down um from the house toward? The lot to the north?
Yes.
Okay. So I do think that. It would be. Wise, just uh even though the runoff from the roof is not required by DEP to be treated. But it does accumulate from pollution, accumulates heavy metals, it accumulates. You know. Bird poop and whatnot, that um. Uh, that maybe if there is an already clear area, there'd be a swale or some kind of something that helps to. Slow down or otherwise um filter water coming from that lot on. On onto the new lot and toward the stream bed. Um, I'm not suggesting at all that trees be removed. In order to make that happen. Uh, in fact, I think that having a well wooded area is probably the best. Um, protection. You know, between the new house and the lot to the north. So, uh, are there other comments that people have? Any any further discussion of this application? Mr. Mueller, would you enumerate um the? Conditions that have been. Discussed and agreed to, there's the paving of the road, there's uh retention of. Uh, trees and consultation with the uh municipal arborist.
Okay, so this is for preliminary and final major subdivision approval with eight variables. Subdivision.
Minor, minor subdivision.
Right.
Oh, minus, okay, sorry, with those.
And and there's the condition that Mr. Cohen, um.
Right, let me go first through um. My notes in terms of the conditions we talked about um tonight, and then I'll go through the reports, see if there's anything addition. The Sandusky letter, I never got a copy of it, but the applicant indicated they would comply.
Right.
Um, the 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 FAR bonus will not be available. Uh, for the developer for each lot, and that was agreed to by Mr. Schatzman. Um, the road will be repaved and I take it that'd be prior to the CO being issued, and that was agreed to by Mr. Schatzman. The applicant um. Will work with the municipal arborist, reserve as many of the trees shown to be removed, and again, Mr. Schatzman agreed. Then going through the reports. Just on page two of six of the report from Derek and Dan. Zoning table on the plan of minor subdivision shall be updated to reflect the values that is set forth on page two of the um. Of the report.
The only thing that would change with that, Jerry, is that the floor area ratio. Would have to be reflected to go back to the. R one, which is twelve and a half percent.
Okay, great, thank you. Then prior to any.
The township, it's R two, not R one. But is it, it's twelve and a half percent for the R two?
Yes. Correct. Ben and Derek?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Then um, prior to any development on proposed. Lot eight point oh two, the applicant shall obtain an NJDEP fresh. For, no, not, it says freshwater wetlands.
Absence of freshwater wetlands.
I'm sorry, say, say again, Rich.
Absent letter, uh, Jerry.
Yeah, okay.
On there, so they wanted, they want an absence letter, the absence of a lot.
Okay. Then the um, the applicant shall file a true removal permit prior to the removal of any trees. Then. We talked about the stormwater management.
Will have to be done in accordance with. If it's a major, then it has to be approved by Mr. Weisman. Who in accordance with the ma- with the major part of the stormwater management provisions of the land development ordinance in Princeton.
Right, thank you, Rich, um, then the applicant shall file an engineering site plan review application. With the engineering department prior to filing a zoning permit for the development on proposed lot eight point oh two, and then if. The plans. the plans show conformity, bear with me.
You have to eliminate the garage variance. You have to put something in the resolution that the garage, the garage has to comply with the ordinance. Garage setback has to comply with the ordinance.
Yeah, right. Bear with me.
Separate utilities for the existing house and ADU.
Yep. Um, then the applicant shall coordinate with the appropriate utility companies to accommodate new services for the proposed dwelling. Do we need to put anything in on that? Dan? Yeah, okay. Then, um, this is on page five of six. Repairing zone of the existing drainages shall be updated to reflect a three hundred foot wide uh, as per a certain NJAC section. Alternatively, the applicant may obtain an NJDEP flood hazard area applicability determination, and if obtained, shall be provided to the municipality prior to any application for development. And then the additional standards, which is five point oh, the kind of standard stuff, pins, uh, to be set at the new lot line. Um, lot eight point oh two, the new address, legal description shall be submitted by the, uh, for review by the municipality's land surveyor, surveyor consultant. Um, the subdivision plot shall be provided to the engineering department, department in digital form to facilitate updates to the tax map and shall include two pairs of NJ state playing requirements, submit Morse County Planning Board for approval. The documents should be approved by me and then, um, that'll be, uh, that's it.
Mr. O'Donnell? You're on mute. And then Mr.
Thank you.
And then Mr. McGowan?
Your, uh, Mr. Schatzman, uh, kindly, uh, agreed to have a, some kind of neighborhood meeting, uh, probably through the association. Is, I don't know if that needs to be included in.
Yeah. We, no, that, that's not part of the end, no, you wouldn't.
Okay.
Just, just take it that we'll do it.
Yeah. I would not put it in.
Okay, I, I think we can trust you, Mr. Schatzman. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Mr. McGowan?
Uh, that was my question, so it's been answered.
Great minds. Okay, any other, um, comments on conditions, Mr. Mueller? Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
If, if Mr. Mueller knows after he does the resolution or memorialization, the way I've been operating in my career is if I see in this res- uh, condition, I'll point it out.
Oh, yeah, I'll circulate it to you, Rich, as you know.
Yeah.
Well, tha- thank you. I appreciate your saying that, Mr. Schatzman.
I did that, I did that when, in Montgomery Township and Danny Bernstein, your former planning board attorney told me I was the only attorney, uh, that does that. But, but I, I, I told, I told that in disbelief. He says, no, no, you're the only one. This, we agree to something in order, it's gotta, it should be in the regulation.
It was mostly before my time. Anyway, um, uh, having heard the discussion and the, um, conditions that were discussed, would someone like to make a motion on this application? Mr. Cohen?
I'd, I'd be happy to move for approval of the applications with the conditions listed.
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Um, roll call, please.
Yes, hi, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tech Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Schatzman and, and, uh, your expert witnesses. Um, I also want to thank the members of the public who spoke. Um, your comments were helpful and informed, um, uh, some of the conditions. And notice can be, um, you know, uh, an issue in late August, early September, but as we acknowledged early in the meeting, um, the notice was proper. Um, and, uh, um, so, uh, we appreciate your mobilizing quickly to, to appear here and listen and speak your minds tonight. Um, so, uh, any other business? Mr. Co- Mr. Cohen, are you rusty, having not, having not been?
I, I remember my, well.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Thank you all, uh, very much. See you next time.
Have a good night.
Good night.